Well, then seeing the presence of a quorum, I will now call the Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee to order at six thirty seven on Tuesday, April fourth. Start with a roll call, roll call, I guess. Allison?
Allison present.
Jennifer?
Jennifer present.
Margaret?
Margaret present.
Peter?
Peter present.
Sarah Bass?
Sarah Bass present.
Earth?
Earth present.
Jean?
Jean present.
And me Ben Harrington present. So our first item is the regional school committee will now consider entering into executive session in accordance with open meeting law, Mass General law chapter thirty eight, section twenty one A to conduct collective bargaining sessions and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation of APEA, APAA, and AFSCME. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair so declares, can I declare it? And to approve minutes in accordance with open meeting law, Mass General law chapter thirty eight, section twenty two with the intention of returning to open session. Take a roll call vote, or right. We'll start. Here we go. You have a second?
Second.
We'll start roll call vote. Jeanie?
Jeanie, yes.
Peter?
Uh, Peter, aye.
Earth?
Aye.
Sarah Bass?
Sarah Bass, aye.
Allison?
Allison, aye.
Jennifer?
Jennifer, aye.
Margaret?
Margaret, aye.
And me Ben, aye also.
Okay, let me go ahead and just stop the recording and the streaming.
Anyone reaching out to Margaret? So we'll start off with the approval of minutes from March 15. Everybody had a chance to look them over, like, are we able to? Uh, Margaret?
I have one correction under the, um, whoo, school committee announcements when I talked about the evaluation process at the very end. It says the full school committee would vote on the tool in June. We actually will vote on the evaluation itself in June.
Uh, Alison.
I know I've asked for this before, so I apologize for being broken record, but could you, could we please add our towns to our, to each member's name?
Um, Eileen, go ahead.
Sorry, just to clarify, did you want that for all the regional meetings or did you mean for the joint meetings specifically?
All regional meetings. So his, in the past, it was practice to indicate sort of where, what, what our role, what, which town we were representing in, in the regional school committee.
Yeah, I can go ahead and add that.
All right. Any other edits or adds? All right. I will undertake a motion.
I move approve the March 15th, 2022 minutes. Second?
Moved by Jennifer, segmented by Margaret. No discussion, we will, I think I wrote all votes. No discussion, we will, I think I wrote all votes. Sarbas?
Sarbas, I.
Jennifer?
Jennifer, I.
Steven?
Steven, I.
Margaret?
Margaret, I.
Peter?
Peter, I.
Jean?
Jean, I.
Uh, Allison?
Allison, I.
Erb?
Erb, I.
Me, Ben, I. All right. So we'll move on to a public comment. I actually do not have any written public comment. There was no voicemail, so we'll, if there's anybody here that's a, wants to give a live public comment, you can go ahead and raise the, use the raise hand feature. It's the middle button on the bottom set of controls there. It's like this. Go ahead and raise your hand if you have public comment. Public comment going once. All right. So we'll move on to the, seeing no public comments, we'll move on to the superintendent's update.
Thank you. I've got a, a couple of things to update tonight. So the first is, um, uh, for those of you who are interested in, in theater, this is our full, first skit, first full-scale production since literally March 13th, 2020. So thanks to John Beck told, many people at the high school, they're choosing to do Hair, the musical starts Thursday, it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday this week. Uh, I saw students singing when I was over at the high school yesterday. It, they were fabulous. They're doing a dress, um, most of the day tomorrow and just congratulations to students, um, and staff who are supporting them, uh, for getting a full-scale production up. I think I've gotten a couple of questions about the rules for that. And John and myself and Principal Siddique had a conversation a couple of months or a month ago. And so we are, we've adopted the rules that exist on Broadway, um, that involve, you know, vaccine mandate. There are some exemptions, um, that we've, we've received and we're able to work from, and that it is a masked, uh, audience and, and that really allows us to fill the capacity. So sort of like we had, do we want less people to go and fewer say health and safety rules or more people to be able to attend with more health and safety rules? And we went for the latter. Um, and so we're glad we did that because there's a large interest. I was talking to John again yesterday and he's getting a lot, a lot of interest and, and I think people are hungry to see our student performers, uh, do their thing. So, uh, again, congratulations, uh, to them and, um, you know, I know many people in the community are looking forward to those performances, not just the kind of parents, guardians and fellow classmates, but the larger community, you know, comes out because they do such a fabulous job. Um, so I encourage everyone else to, to do that if they have time on Thursday, Friday or Saturday. Um, uh, I was able to visit, um, Amherst College to guest lecture in one of their classes last week. I will, um, gladly note that the, uh, guess the lecture was in a course of a former regional school committee member who's a professor there. So she drew a nice diagram for the students on our governance, uh, Union 26, Union 28, uh, the region, the elementary districts, um, to which, yeah, 25 very bright Amherst College students said, well, why would you ever design it like that? Um, and so I tried to explain it. Uh, I think I failed at that part, but I greatly enjoyed, uh, working with students who are really interested. And this is part of the educational studies program that was recently started at Amherst College. So, um, you know, we made more connections. We have our, uh, working with W S Morland. We have an intern for the third summer in a row through their Houston, uh, internship fellowship process. This is the first one where it's not virtual, which is going to be fabulous. Um, someone will be onsite this summer, working on many projects, uh, for the, across the district. So really, really nice to make more connections with the young people in our area who have lots of fresh ideas, lots of things to share and a very diverse group of students who are, uh, very invested in that at Amherst College. Um, I do want to address, um, some of the issues, you know, I've been aware of some of the media reporting in the last 24 hours on incidents that have happened in the high school of the last two weeks. Um, I think it is worthwhile to, to look back and then forward. So, um, we did notice an uptick in incidents, um, in the fall. And we added staffing. So a couple of months ago, we added, uh, culture support position, and that's thanks to an earmark that Representative Dom was able to find for us. I want to publicly thank her for that. Um, we've added more hall monitors and we added, um, so we, you know, it was, um, something we noticed as students return. I think it's also worth noting, it's interesting talking to my colleagues in other districts, that we are noticing across districts that our current eighth through 10th grade students seem to be having a harder time returning, um, to school. Um, and you know, kind of, this is, this is hypothesizing. I have no data or evidence other than conversations with Hamden Hampshire and Franklin County superintendents, but a lot of us are wondering about developmental stages and, and for students who are in lockdown, um, virtual or literal lockdown for certain, for a large part who are a certain age. You know, uh, I think I've spoken about this in one of my other districts, you know, we talk about academic, uh, impact, but the social impact of sort of missing a year or a year and a half of uh, kind of early adolescence i- is something that we need to dig more into. And, and again, this is certainly happening in Amherst, but you can Google lots and lots of other places and find lots of similar articles. Um, and, um, you know, it's just worth noting that, that we are noticing this in some grade levels more than others and, uh, we're not alone in that. Um, this week, Principal Siddique and his team have led assemblies for all grade levels in the high school. I was able to attend the 12th grade uh, assembly. They did a fantastic job. And I think of note is we are partnering with our CREST programs. The CREST program is the new, uh, public safety response. Earl Millers, the, was hired to be the director. He is fantastic. We had a meeting with him, him, myself and Talib and one of the other CREST members. Um, there's not, their, their team is not fully formed last week. Earl's fabulous. He wants to be a presence. He's starting being a presence immediately. He was at, he introduced himself to, uh, the students at the information sessions and he wants to be an active part of proactive work. You know, he's organized sessions on active bystander, for instance, and offering that to all of our students. He's very, you know, he knows his audience, especially with the seniors. He's like, there's jobs, right? You get trained in this. You can work, you can work for me. And, um, you know, that had a really positive response, uh, for a lot of students, particularly those who are staying local or planning to stay local, uh, or take a gap year. And so, um, that's a really positive partnership that we're still building, uh, with the CREST program. Again, it's a new program, but Earl very, very much sees the schools as part of the community. Um, and I think that's another thing to note is, you know, we, uh, don't call the police casually, you know, it's not that we don't want to work with the police, but certainly, um, when there are incidents where people file charges, um, we have that connection. Uh, and what we're noticing is things that are happening in the community bring, coming into school. And that's not a new trend. It's not something that we're unaware of, but it is something that we're noticing and trying to just make sure that they're letting us know if they're hearing about things happening in the community, because that's what we're, we're seeing. Uh, that, that's certainly the trend that we're seeing. It's less individual conflict that happens during school. It's things that are happening out of school, coming into our school setting. So we want to keep those communication lines open so that if there is, there are conflicts going on in the community, that we can make sure that, um, we're not, you know, calling the police to be in, unless they needed, but that we're aware of them and we can have our counseling staff and other staff members be informed, uh, to keep everyone, um, safe. Um, I, I think it's worth noting a couple of other things, just very briefly, there was, um, note of a DESI audit. Um, that's a regular routine audit that happens every couple of years. There's nothing to do with, um, anything going on in the school. They were in a couple of weeks ago. It was a very smooth, uh, visit. Uh, they asked for hundreds and hundreds of pages, paperwork and all that. Um, and we'll get that report. We'll share it with the committee when it comes in, but, um, that's something that happens on a regular basis and it's unrelated to any, um, incidents going on in the school. And I really want to thank Principal Siddique here. He was incredibly transparent in his email to families, uh, a week ago. Um, there's lots of ways he could have opted to sugarcoat, um, the, the particular incident he was describing. He opted to be very, very open and transparent about the severity of it. Uh, we are getting some pushback from students on some of the, uh, rules, but I think it's, that's, that's the nature of these things. That's not a bad thing. And having dialogue is, is what we want from our students. Um, and I think some of the things we're hearing from students, um, and I think this was reported in a different paper was, you know, we don't love new rules because most of us are unaffected by kind of some of these things. And for us, we believe that, you know, violence anywhere affects us all. And so, you know, we are taking active measures to both, you know, connect and hear from students, but also reinforce some strategies that we think will reduce, um, students being in hallways unnecessarily and those less structured times where we're seeing challenges exist. Uh, we're happy to update the committee and I talked to Principal Siddique and, um, you know, it's not an gendered item tonight. So, um, but you know, we can certainly keep on that conversation, but it's certainly something we're aware of. We have been actively working on, uh, over, since the students came back in the fall. We had kind of a rocky start with that. It had improved and then we've, we're having a rockier stretch now and, um, we are marshaling resources, um, to improve the situation for all students at the high school. Uh, the last thing I'll say is that, um, there's some perception that if we have restorative justices occurring in school, that suspensions never happen. Uh, I just want to say that's not mutually, those two things aren't mutually exclusive, right? If you look at our handbook at the high school, it's very clear on certain offenses do result in suspension. We are not looking to suspend lots of students all the time, right? That's been very clear. It's a long trend that we've gotten feedback from the community, from the school committee on. So I want to be incredibly explicit that that's not our first strategy most of the time. However, there are incidents where to keep everybody both literally and figuratively safe, that's the best option. And so I, I just want to, I think there's some perception that these things are in opposition to one another. And, and that's not, and that's not in fact the case in just about every school in the United States, even those that are models for restorative justice. Um, there are situations where suspensions occur and our school fits within that, then dimension. So are we suspending students as much as we did 10 years ago? Absolutely not, right? That's a factually true statement. I think that's good. And, and I know from Principal Siddique, who's in charge of discipline at the high school, because based on mass general law, it's a school-based decision. We're not looking to do that more than we need to, and the key phrase is need to. Uh, and what are situations or conditions where, uh, behavior is egregious enough where it requires that level of response? And we've had some situations recently where that has occurred. Um, but it's a false dichotomy and, and I just want to be really clear, uh, about that. Um, I think, uh, the justice who was being nominated for the Supreme Court had a really good line that I'm going to totally not get as well as she said, uh, thankfully not as many people watching me, but, um, right? So there are deterrents. There's lots of things that, um, provide deterrence, right? In our school setting, um, taking off what she said, you know, constant logical consequences are some of a deterrent, but they don't solve the problem itself, right? And that's the framing that we have for restorative justice. Even if there is a suspension that takes place, that doesn't preclude the need for a sort of justice. It actually increases the need for a sort of justice, that these two things in certain situations work collaboratively together to have long-term benefits and change behaviors. Uh, it's not one or the other. And so sorry to kind of harp on that point, but it's something that feels a really unfair criticism of a sort of justice. Is, is it assumed something, uh, about, you know, the lack of consequences that is in fact not accurate? On to other things. Um, certainly I'll take questions at the end, uh, Saturday at Fort River, but it's open to all students in the district is Latino Heritage, um, event, El Cafe Cultural Latino. Um, it's between 10 and 12:30 and it's open to everyone in the ARPS community. There's songs, there's music, uh, and thanks to Kitty Richardson for putting that on. Um, we are looking to engage and gather feedback from stakeholders about the change in start time. As I said, it's not being reconsidered for next school year. Um, I had a conversation with the superintendent of Hampton. They made a very similar change than us. Uh, and we had this, a nice idea of doing, creating a tool, uh, to gather feedback together, because the more minds, uh, the more communities, the better. Not that we would necessarily get the same feedback, but perhaps coming up with the same tool. So the idea is to have a student rep, which Mr. Siddique is talking about, myself and actually a rep from the school committee. So, uh, not looking for a show of hands, but if anyone is interested in working to develop a tool to gather feedback, please just shoot me an email on this group and we'll work collaboratively with North Hampton and get something out and get feedback before the end of the school year. Um, so I thought it was just kind of a neat opportunity. Sometimes we're very siloed in education. We have a lot of districts in Massachusetts and sometimes we don't always work together. And this seemed like a logical place of similar minded communities to come up with a feedback mechanism that hopefully, uh, is better than if we were working separately in our part. So, um, I'm always looking for any advantage, uh, any opportunity to work collaboratively with another district. Uh, I was able last week to attend, uh, and be a guest judge in Mr. Fricker's, uh, com- uh, comm law class at the high school. It was the group of seniors who were providing, uh, preventing their case about real life cases, uh, about gendered bathrooms from the Commonwealth of Virginia. And just incredible. I do this every year, pretty much anytime Tom asks me, I'm going to do it because I love that work, but, um, students were talking about very complex issues and what really impresses me every time is they have their own personal viewpoint on the issue and their ability to put that aside and argue the case constitutionally. Uh, shows me that the work that the students are doing in the class and Mr. Fricker's excellent work teaching is really giving them an opportunity to practice that skill. Um, we do a lot of advocacy in the world, uh, which is really good, but to practice those skills on topics where you may actually personally disagree with the topic, uh, but you have the capacity and skills to do that. It's just fabulous. So thank you, Tom, for inviting me and, and the students were, um, dynamic. Some of them I knew from Crocker from all the way back, which is always incredibly fun for me to see. Um, last week, the week before, uh, I believe it was the week before, um, Mary Kylie and I met with our middle school student council. So we gathered feedback on the sixth grade move to the middle school and they had slightly contrasting information and feedback than our sixth grade students, uh, that we surveyed at the elementary school. We really wanted to get their direct feedback. That's all been emailed out because we did a survey, uh, of stakeholders, uh, about this, but we, we wrote summaries up and, and that was shared out. And you know, one of the interesting things, uh, that, you know, adults might not necessarily think of automatically was they're like, they can't be on the same bell schedule. The halls will be too crowded, right? People will be using the bathroom at the same, like super important piece of information that unless you're a student at Amherst Regional Middle School, um, some of those things might be lost. So it was about 25 students, uh, who are on their student council, a mix of seventh and eighth graders. And, um, we, we give them an hour. They were missing their lunch at then. We're like, no, go get your lunch. So we held the lunch line because I had so much to share. So we're going to keep on talking to a, a couple of them that are incredibly passionate about it, but uh, that was, anytime I'm with students, right? That's the highlight of my week. You could see me coming alive, talking about it, but, but they really were fabulous. My last update, sorry, this is a lengthy one. Um, uh, the rest of the meeting, I'll be pretty quiet. Frankly, it's a lot of, uh, Dr. Slaughter, but, um, is that tomorrow night, uh, if you're interested, the cohort of six students that, uh, have been waiting for two years to travel to West Africa for the, uh, semi, uh, Gambian Scholars Program. Uh, they finally made it, you know, they'd been delayed because of COVID and they're having a, uh, presentation tomorrow night at 7:00 PM in the high school cafeteria. Uh, everyone's welcome to attend, but there is a registration link because they just, from a COVID perspective, they just want to know how many people are coming to, how to set up the room. So, uh, show this for the committee, but anyone in the public, uh, you know, you can reach out to me if you don't have the link, but they would love to have an audience, um, to share about their fabulous experience. And that is my lengthy update for the evening. I'm happy to take any questions.
Margaret, and then I'll take Stephen.
So Mike, acronyms. What is the CREST program?
I'm sorry. I, I, uh, it was a very Emmercentric thing of me to say. So the CREST program is a community responders program. So it's a, a program that is, um, intentionally focused on, um, alternatives to using the police in difficult moments. It's, it's intended to be proactive as well. And they have, uh, funding from the town of Amherst and they, um, similar to the, what I've talked about in the schools, they're also interested in doing in the community in terms of proactive work, um, active bystander training, um, and getting out to know people and, uh, being more connected. So they are not part of the police. I think it's really important to note. Um, but they are involved in, uh, working through some difficult issues in our community.
Okay. And what are actually the letters for that? Acronym?
I use it so casually that it's, uh, I, I want to guess, but, uh, if you give me, actually what I'd like to do is I will send the committee, there's a really nice website on the town website, really nice link that describes the program, the intentions, the around, uh, the, how it came about, and I'll send it to the regional school committee.
Great.
Probably once the N D conversation starts.
Uh, Stephen, go ahead.
Yeah. First I'm going to say Yahoo for that trip. It seems like they started talking about that in 2014 when I started on this committee. Yahoo for making it. And the, uh, that's exciting. And the other question I have is with the sixth graders, did the Amherst School Committee ever vote about allowing school choice students into the sixth grade? Cause I know that the talk about sports and clubs is really taken off.
Um, so I think I, I'm probably the best suited to answer that, uh, from a meeting perspective. So no, there has not been a discussion at this point. We're still a year plus out. Um, but I do imagine that will be an implementation question when school choice comes up for the Amherst School Committee next year. Um, this year, the Amherst School Committee, uh, only accepted choice students in kindergarten. So, um, there's not a fifth grade component to get to your, because I think I understand where you're coming from, Steve. Um, so there wouldn't be students coming next year for Amherst's fifth or sixth grade. But I can't predict how that will turn out next year. Thank you for the question, Steve.
And to answer, uh, Margaret's question, it's community responders for equity, safety and service. That's CREST. And I also have to say Earl is a awesome human being and I'm excited for him to be. I also have to say Earl is an awesome human being and I'm excited for him to be working with us here. Any other questions regarding the superintendent's update or commentary there? All right, so we'll move on to the shares update, which I do not have tonight, but I will have a absolutely fabulous update next week, I promise, it's got time. I wasn't scuffed though. We'll go uh, school committee announcements. Anybody? Anything interesting from their committees? Okay, I'm going to renege on the not giving an update and actually point out that the school equity advisory committee, we're still kind of regrouping, but we'll have our next meeting on May 2nd and that will be on board docs and. Allison.
Hi, got mixed up between open session and exec session. The um, negotiating team is meeting again um, tomorrow, met last week with the A P E A um, for his first session um, in traditional bargaining and is meeting um, again tomorrow evening at 5:00. Um, and again, the week of April 25th.
Right, any other announcements, updates, et cetera? All right, let's move on to E and D distribution. Doug set up or Mike set up, Doug, right?
Yeah, I can, I can take away. So what I'll do is I'll share the memo that I, that I wrote to you guys, uh, so give me a moment to bring that up. So I won't go through all of the text here on the, on the uh, on the memo, but I will, I will sort of hit the highlights as it were. And I will zoom in just a little bit more. So you can see the numbers actually. Uh, so long story short, is E and D is, is uh, called, you know, it's excess and deficiency. Uh, it parallels it on, in a town budget, the reserves, in other words, money that is uh, uh, left over at the end of the year. If our budget is under uh, doubt that was projected and the remaining uh, resources are of, are allowed to go into uh, essentially savings account called excess and deficiency. Um, by virtue of way, the way in which regional schools work, there is a limit on how big that number can get. Um, and we try to, you know, maintain a fairly steady amount uh, so that we can utilize that funding for uh, support of our budget, which is allowed. Uh, however, there is a limit, an upper limit, and given the way last year finished up, uh, so we, we dealt with a tremendous amount of uncertainty in fiscal 21. Uh, we held off on spending, we are very conservative in how we approached uh, our, our budgets. And as a result, uh, you know, a lot of the things we were concerned about or costs we thought we might incur, we did not. We had a fair amount of support from, from federal grants that also helped uh, reduce our, our spending. And so as a result, uh, you know, our, our excess and deficiency uh, was above the threshold necessary or allowed, I should say, by the, by the state. And as a result, uh, we have, it was really sort of two options, but at this point, since we voted our budget, uh, we really only have one option. And, and that is we can reduce the current year assessments to the communities and uh, and increase the amount in our budget that is being funded by excess and deficiency funds. So in the current year, we funded uh, $200,000 worth of our budget from E and D. We took a conservative approach to that because we, we were expecting our E and D number to be uh, lower. And so we are now able to increase that by $474,541. So we'll increase uh, our E and D spending uh, in the current year by that amount. And as a result, we can lower the assessments to each of the four member communities by the amount shown on the uh, on the memo. Um, the other option, if we were earlier in the fiscal year is we could uh, essentially uh, leverage uh, more E and D in, in our, you know, in our assessment and budgeting process for fiscal 23. But since we've already uh, you know, worked through our, our uh, assessment method and our, our planning for fiscal 23, this is the uh, the option available to us. And so as a result, there's really two parts to this motion that's in front of you. One is to increase the amount of E and D uh, used to support our, our current year budget and to identify the amount to be returned or in, in our case, not charged in the final assessment. So we'll do our final assessment to each of the four communities at the beginning of May, May 1st essentially. And what we'll do is we'll reduce each of the assessments by the amount shown in that middle column there. Uh, and so each of the communities will have that resource available to them. It will technically in each of the four communities uh, flow to their reserves or could be appropriated by their, you know, town meeting and or, or or town council in Amherst's case, uh, but it is available for their use in another way, whether it be this fiscal year or some subsequent fiscal year. Given that we're going to talk about a track project in a few minutes, one option that could be uh, suggested to the communities from either the school committee or from, from myself to them is to take this money that they had intended to spend on the schools, which wasn't necessary to be spent on the schools and sort of reserve it for use uh, for the schools, whether it be for a capital project, like the track project or for other purposes. Um, but nonetheless, this is uh, for each of the towns, it will be uh, providing them a bit of relief in their current year budgets. Uh, and so uh, I'll take any questions anyone has relative to this and then we, we'll need to take the motion as, as written there on the memo.
Um, I have a question.
Uh, yeah, go ahead, Gene.
Yeah, um, how was the amount for each town determined as opposed to uh, and how much you're going to increase from 200,000, you're putting another 425 or 35,000?
So the uh, so the amount.
But could, could the town, could the town uh, you know, assessments be reduced by more?
The, so the amount that, that uh, was available, that was in excess of the, of the limit allowed by, by state law was the amount in excess was 474,541 dollars. And then the way that is apportioned, and so if you take those numbers for the E and D return, that totals, that group totals uh, the 474,541. The way in which that is apportioned to each town is based on the assessment method we used in fiscal 21, which is when we collected the money, so we're basically reversing the process of, of, of uh, the assessment that we used in fiscal 21 uh, to apportion those, those dollars back to uh, to each of the towns. So you know, effectively it's money that was, you know, charged to each town in fiscal 21, we're giving it back in 22, but because we're using the uh, money that was, was gathered from each community in fiscal 21, we use the fiscal 21 assessment method to determine the amounts uh, for, for each community.
Thanks, I understand.
Other questions coming? Right, so entertaining motion?
I move to increase the amount of E and D funds used to support the fiscal year 22 operating budget by 474,451 dollars to a new value of 674,451 dollars and to revise the assessments to each member town as shown in the finance director's memo dated March 15th, 2022.
Second.
Moved by Jennifer, seconded by Margaret. Open it up for discussion.
I just want to say briefly appreciate the, the work of um, Doug and his team to and, and the staff who've lived under some difficult budgets in the last couple of years, um, to have this efficiency. It can only help the prospects for things like the track, so um, and I'm sure towns are always happy to get money back, so it's much appreciated.
Anyone else? All right, so no further discussion, I will take a rule call vote, we'll go Sarabes?
Sarabes, aye.
Margaret?
Margaret, aye.
Jennifer?
Jennifer, aye.
Allison?
Allison, aye.
Erv?
Erv, aye.
Gene?
Gene, aye.
Peter?
Peter, aye.
Oh, Stephen?
Sullivan, aye.
And me, aye, the motion passes unanimous. Right. Capital stabilization fund dispersment. Go ahead, Doug.
Don't let the uh, the share, the, the memo for this come up as well. Again, so you can see the, the numbers that are there. So the regional school committee, uh, we have a stabilization fund for capital that we uh, allows us to uh, to uh, reserve some money, budget some money, set aside some money for capital projects in the future. But it also allows us to do some of what we're doing here, which is allow us to uh, kind of uh, operate and, and handle our capital expenses uh, through this account. Uh, and so what we do, and, and this requires school committee action in order to do this is um, we, when we go to pay interest and collect, so we collect the assessments for capital from each of the communities through the capital assessment. Uh, what this allows us to do is to uh, to put that into the, you know, the, the sort of uh, non-principle aspects of it. We put it into this stabilization fund. And then as a result, we are then able to pay certain bills out of the stabilization fund. And so what this action does is allows uh, the school committee to take that action, use the stabilization fund in order to pay a couple of bills, interest on our short-term uh, borrowing that we have, which is the bond anticipation notes or sometimes referred to as a BAN, uh, B A N. Uh, we have a little bit of interest on that. And then uh, we have had, and this is the final one of these, uh, a, a borrowing we did through the town of Amherst, uh, when we did some renovations relative to uh, moving Summit Academy into our high school building. Um, and so we basically uh, instead of borrowing from a bank, we borrowed from the town of Amherst. And since they actually bundled it with a larger set of borrowing on their side, so we kind of piggybacked on that. So we pay the town of Amherst back, uh, this is the final payment on that uh, borrowing. Uh, and so those two in combination are expenditures we're going to make out of that stabilization fund. Um, below that, you're seeing, you know, where the beginning balance was for the stabilization fund at the beginning of this year, just over $500,000. Uh, the, the year-to-date earnings on investment is, is basically the interest we've earned uh, through, I believe February, we'll earn a little bit more as the year goes on, not a, a whole lot. Uh, the, the expenditures that we're going to do tonight, uh, and then what the ending balance will be for our stabilization fund. Um, and so what this is, is in some ways, it's a bit of a formality. If you were to not do this, then we would have to pay these bills, which we owe uh, through other parts of our budget, quite frankly. And so that's uh, you know, the intention was and the design of our capital assessments and our, and our uh, budgeting has been such that we were planning on doing it this way. But nonetheless, if you decide not to use stabilization fund for this and, and those funds remain within stabilization, uh, then we would have to find other, other sources within our, our budget uh, in order to pay those bills. So I, I will suggest to strongly recommend that you, that you do this, but nonetheless, um, I'm happy to take any questions uh, anyone has relative to the use of the stabilization fund.
Go ahead, Mike.
I think just uh, for the committee, but also for members of the public, because, because this is something that comes up a lot, both E and D and uh, stabilization fund, I think it's just worth noting, uh, and I know it's embedded in the document, Doug, but I just uh, just more for the public that um, the reason we have these funds at the region is we're not part of the municipal government. So if something goes wrong at the region, there is no town of Amherst or town, other town reserves. Uh, we are a separate entity and so there is a financial ramification of that. And one of those, there are fundamental ramifications, excuse me, of that. And one of the financial ramifications is we do need to keep money in E and D. Uh, and we do need to keep coming money in a stabilization fund because there is no other fund. If you look at like uh, municipal budgets, um, you will see that, you know, they want to keep a certain percentage in reserves. Uh, regional districts keep nowhere near the percentage in reserves that, that municipalities do and for, for reasonable reasons. But that, that's why you see the numbers on the screen and that's why you see um, conversations about that is um, we are essentially a municipality and we do not have uh, financial capacity other than going to towns and asking for money off-cycle, which given the nature of the towns we're in, uh, because of the town meeting cycle, we couldn't do immediately. And so when it comes to things like um, stabilization, capital stabilization, uh, the reason we don't want to spend this all, for instance, on, you know, one item is things go wrong in our schools and we need to make sure that we have uh, access to this uh, this set of funds so that we could make quick changes or spend quickly to make sure our schools stay safe. So sorry, Doug, I know that you, that's all embedded in here, but I think for members of the public, they might wonder, why do we have these things in region and not in some of the municipal districts? But it's because we, we essentially are a municipality, uh, being in the regional schools. So sorry for the long-winded answer, but I just, it's a question to get a lot from members of the public. And I think just anytime I have the opportunity and a couple of people anyways are watching, I think it's worth mentioning.
Thank you.
Any questions on, bam, uh, go ahead, Margaret.
So I probably missed this, Doug, but where does the money come from that goes into the stabilization fund?
So there's, there's two mechanisms for doing that. Um, one of the ones is that, you know, when we, we do our capital assessment, uh, and we particularly have an expectation of, of uh, that being used for for paying down principal on our, our, on our borrowing as well as the interest costs. We often will estimate the interest costs so that we're not shorthanded. So uh, some of the uh, you know, residual interest is part of the action that we're taking here to, to put money into the stabilization fund. The other thing, uh, the other way in which we, we can put money into this stabilization fund is to formally build it into our budgeting. Um, so if we were in, and, and we've done that over the years, we haven't done it recently. But we've done it probably four or five years ago, we had a, essentially projected a, a pretty good year from a revenue standpoint. And so I think we put a 68 or 70,000 dollars into stabilization as part of the budget. And you have to actually do it as a part of the budget, uh, and this gets back to the E and D. But, but if, if for example, we were at the end of a fiscal year, we had some money remaining and we thought, well, let's put it in stabilization, we can't really do that, you have to budget it in advance. And, and, and the reason why is because when you put money into stabilization, it does not count toward E and D. And so in a sense, it would be a way of sort of hiding money from any E and D conversation. And, and it's not really with the, the state wants you to be transparent about your, your uh, storing of money that's, you know, in excess or, or uh, separate from uh, your regular operating budgets. And so that's, that's why some of the limitations, but you can either appropriate money into it directly as part of your budgeting process, um, which is essentially what we do by virtue of, you know, direct ones as well as our, as, as part of our capital assessment to each of the four towns. We have a little bit that trickles in each year.
Any other questions? All right, in that case, I will move to approve the fiscal year 22 district dispersment from the capital stabilization fund as shown in the finance director's memo dated March 15th, 2022.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Discussion, I will take a rule call vote, we'll go Jennifer?
Jennifer, aye.
Erv?
Erv, aye.
Allison?
Allison, aye.
Margaret?
Margaret, aye.
Uh, Stephen?
Sullivan, aye.
Sarabes?
Sarabes, aye.
Gene?
Gene, aye.
Peter?
Peter, aye.
And me, Ben, aye. Motion passes unanimous. Track and field project update.
Yeah, I can queue this up if that's okay and then have Doug go. This is, this is just a brief update because we do have some town meetings starting pretty soon. Uh, or one town meeting soon and then the other two in May. Um, so uh, we, we are asked to write memos and provide information for the town meetings, um, in three of our four member towns. And um, I'll turn over to Doug, but we, we thought before we go in front of a town meeting to talk about this, we wanted to share the draft of the information sheet for town meeting. Um, Doug, is that enough to queue you up to describe things?
It is, and, and I'm not sure as wordy as this document is, whether it's valuable to sort of present it on screen, but I'm certainly happy to. Do you think I should or I'm?
I think if you just summarize it, I mean, it's been in the packet, so I think it's much more an opportunity for me, uh, if it's okay with the chair, for the committee to ask any questions about that more than to go over it because it, it is wordy, which is, it needs to be because it's a complex set of things that I know will get many, many questions that are three town meetings about. Um, but just give, I wanted the, we wanted the regional school committee to have an opportunity to ask any questions, offer any feedback before it goes into the packet that um, uh, as those of you in the three of the towns know, there's many, many papers out when you get to the uh, town meetings and we didn't want it to go out without both the regional committee having seen it and/or commented on it or as, you know, offered feedback uh, before it goes to those member communities. So it's a, a much more simple uh, topic than the last time we talked about the track. Certainly there's more complex conversations to come on the track, but we just uh, didn't want to move forward because it references specifically the regional school committee, want to make sure we had that right. And their regional school, school committee doesn't need to vote, but was supportive. Their regional school committee doesn't need to vote, but was supportive of this going to the towns.
Right, I think the only thing I'd add is the intention, to my mind, the intention that I wanted to make clear with with this informational, you know, document is. Is the action we're asking town meetings to take and and to to make it very clear that what. Is before them is a debt authorization and the approval of that debt authorization. Without getting too much into all the other complications that we might have relative to the project of the track and fields, but mostly to be very clear about what. What this does and then what sort of subsequent steps happen as a result of of having the authorization to borrow. So I didn't want to, you know, have have there be any. Confusion about what the actual action they're they're being asked to take. And and what it. Effectively does, and then what other next steps will happen as a result of of having that authority to borrow.
Allison, go ahead.
Yeah, I think I think this is a, I can't believe you got it down to one page, so. Nice job, I think it's good. And I just wondered, because I I like the 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 way you start at the beginning to say that, you know, it's a death authorization of 1.5 million. And and then you go into explaining all the details, and I just wonder if maybe at the very end. Because you, because that paragraph explains sort of all the other. Complexities of of getting to option three, I just wonder if adding another sentence to say regardless. The debt authorization is is 1.5 million and will not change, or or is. Able, you know, regardless of which option, the debt authorization. Remains 1.5, something just to drive that home again, so that people aren't thinking, oh, it's gonna, you're gonna come back and ask us for more.
Right, I'm happy to do that, and have that sort of. Bit of closure to it.
Peter, go ahead.
I'll just say a very short comment, but major plus one on that, that was exactly what my suggestion was going to be, I think it's. I don't think you can make it clear enough, but no matter what auction happens, no matter what fundraising, it's going to be 1.5 million, that's. That's it, we're not coming back for addition, I think you just really need to. Drive that commitment home, and that the school committee has been very clear about it.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments on? Field project? We belong to the Granby Public Schools regionalization exploration request. Do you want to jump on that mic, or?
Yeah, I can just set up, I'll queue it up. So this is a request that Chair Harrington and I received. And I think just, I think it's worth noting that this went to a number of different communities, had conversations. With the superintendent there. Who is a different Steven Sullivan, so just to be clear, we're not talking about Steve Sullivan who's on this call. I get confused sometimes if I'm calling one of the other, but uh, but uh, just a happy coincidence about name, not not the same person, but um. Their their finance committee in the town of Granby. Is looking to perhaps explore regionalization with another community only at the secondary level. And so they reached out to a number of communities about their interest. I really like, you know, Steven is a really strong superintendent, good colleague, so none of this is about him, I think at this point, we've had. Two regionalization efforts that have taken tremendous amount of time and energy. That have only involved the four districts that are represented in this room, this virtual room. And been unsuccessful for a whole host of reasons, and that's not a critique, it's just factually true. So I guess my hope of. For adding another community to this region and that working well. I guess I have some questions about, I think I also want to note that this is really coming from the finance committee, not from the superintendent and school committee. In terms of the intentionality of it, so certainly there's no commitment other than to explore it if the committee decides to explore it, but from a capacity perspective. I I do wonder about the, how much capacity to put into. This potential project, but I'm happy to answer any questions from my perspective, you know. I know this is against type, usually I am looking for efficiencies in in financial ways, but I'm I'm just not sure. This is the path to move forward with, but again, I'm happy to share any other thoughts or question, answer any questions that I'm able to. About this, Mr. Harrington and I had a conversation, we we thought it was wise to bring it to the full committee instead of making a decision. Just rush directly to Ben, but I'm sorry, Mr. I'll use that language, I forgot which committee I was on, so it was a rush directly to Ben. But in our conversation, we thought it was wise to bring to the full committee for dialogue and and potentially a decision.
Peter, go ahead.
So thank you for bringing this to us. So when I first read about this, I was I was immediately intrigued because I've been involved in a couple of regionalization efforts, I was. Chair of a regional school district planning board for a couple of years and my life in another committee. And what Dr. Morris said at the top is absolutely correct, these are. Very complex things to get into, and they usually fail, not because, usually not because anybody. Lack of, you know, positive intentions to want to make things work, but you essentially have individual communities trying to. You know, make trade-offs of of losing some level of autonomy in order to be stronger together, which. I mean, obviously, we're in a region, and so we see the benefits of that, but. But it is, it is, it is complex. But I I I was intrigued initially because, you know, there's, there's not a lot of. Opportunities we have to move the needle on the big things that affect our budget and our. And and the the long-term trajectory of our schools, right, like, we don't, we don't really have super amount of control over state-level funding. Or the charter school funding formula. Or or enrollment, so we 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 obviously have ability to affect enrollment to a degree, and we try to encourage that through a number of different ways, but. I mean, the fact is, over the last decade, you know, we've lost about 300 kids for declining enrollment, and that's just. There's many factors, and that's a big topic, and so we don't have a lot of opportunities to like significantly improve that, and. Granby seven to 12 is about that many kids. So that, and and being able to more fully leverage the economy at scale like that is intriguing, however. I I don't think I would be comfortable even committing to exploring it, given that. The Granby School Committee isn't comfortable stating that they're committed to exploring it. You know, like, I don't, I don't need the the Granby School Committee to say, yes, they want to regionalize, that would obviously be premature, but. I I would think for this to be productive at all. You would at least want their school committee to be interested in exploring it, and if they're not yet ready for that. I don't, I don't feel like it's in the best interest of our region to wade in the middle of a discussion that doesn't seem to have. Cohesion yet in Granby. You know, knowing nothing about the Granby discussion, so. That's, that's just, that's why, how I initially feel about it.
I think I plan to to agree, like, I forget the exact quote in on mass live, but. It it doesn't seem like there was a. There's any cheerleading effort here going by the Granby School Committee. I also have some logistical issues with the idea, but. Go ahead, Allison.
I I would, I had this, I just want to say, I had a very similar reaction to Peter's and that, like, wow, that that would. Help a lot in terms of efficiencies. But then when I read the letter, it it struck me as. Interesting, to say the least, that there's a, hey, do you want to, you know, essentially they're saying, hey, do you want to team up? Just to be clear, we don't want to team up with any other school district, but we're being asked to ask people, right, so I, it just doesn't seem like. It would be a, you know, a productive project for us to to wade into if if the folks that would need to be. We'd need to be partnering with are not really interested in it either, so. I I share that same interpretation.
Stephen, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm in that same boat, if the, if the people were for it, that'd be one thing, but also. Speaking for my dad, who was a sped director for the old Rochester Regional District that had seven towns. Whoa, he was going crazy, so. Be careful what you wish for.
Erv, go ahead.
It always amazes me that. Community, school district. Corporation or whatever, would send out a letter like that. It's it's astounding to me. Because if you want, really want to talk, then at least you should have in the letter, we are committed. To talking about this in a very serious manner. But this letter was something like, I, I, you know. Why, why even send it out?
I heard somebody raise a hand and don't see it, and raised. It's um. Procedurally, I like. I'm wondering, do we have to take a vote on this at all, or? We collectively decide that.
There's procedurally, there's no vote needed, I think. My suggestion would be just giving anyone on the committee who hasn't spoken an opportunity to. Perhaps offer a diverging opinion, but I think right now, you know, what I'm hearing is a pretty strong consensus one way. But there's no neat, no vote needed, but I think it's just. Making sure that everyone has an opportunity to weigh in if they do have a difference of opinion, and I think then you and I can. Write a nice response.
So is there anybody? Super jazzed up about making this on as an issue? See no jazz, all right, so we'll move along. So. We go to Peter for, is this Peter for policy first reading? Okay.
All right, so we have a number of policies up to consider for archival, so the policy subcommittee. As mentioned previously, has been going through the entire backlog of policies, starting with oldest. Going through, and so at this point, we have a number of review that we've recommended for archive, and after talking about it the last couple of meetings. Deb Westmoreland, who's the superintendent's rep on the policy subcommittee, recommended we. We try the the mechanism that we, she saw work in years past, which is essentially batch a number of. Policies that probably don't need extensive discussion in order to make an archival decision together, so she put this summary doc together for. For a number of different policies, and do you want me to share that, or do you, does somebody else want to share that? That might be just to look at the document. Maybe, I'll I'll just keep talking while you're on, maybe if you're, if you want to pull that up. So so these are, these are six policies to consider for archive, archiving means that they're not active policies. They they can still be available on board docs for historical reference, so it's, it's not like the file is deleted. And in in terms of process, it's, it's up to us, our policy on policies doesn't require that we have a first read and a second read in order to. Consider archival, but we can certainly do that for for some of these or or all of these if we want. So just to to briefly summarize, I mean, you, it's, it's, Deb did a really good job there summarizing. The reasons, but these are all very old policies back to the 80s. That that no longer apply for a number of different reasons, so the first two are regarding staff and students with AIDS. That are from very early years. In the societal understanding of AIDS. They're very outdated, I think, I think it, they were, it sounds like they they were, when you read them, that they were. Created with good intentions. During a time when there was an extreme amount of prejudice against people with AIDS. But they, they definitely don't apply anymore, there's, there's actually some kind of concerning language. In the policy about school attendance that gets really specific into medical. Conditions and where you, a student shouldn't be in school, that is really inappropriate. So those, for those reasons, that our committee was quite clear that those should be archived. And in fact, if if people had a chance to read them, I would prefer to get those off the books as soon as possible, so just, personally, I would be. Into voting those to archive tonight, so the other, the others are about. School committee responsibilities for appointing staff, and. As noted, these are adopted prior to ed reform, this will be a recurring theme, and a lot of the first policies we recommend for archive is that. In about 92 or 93, there was a major change in Massachusetts education law that altered. The responsibilities and oversight of school committees versus superintendents. And central administrators, and so a lot of these are come of this variety where. They've referenced things that we just don't do anymore. And then the last two, we also have a number of these from from this era of policies that are very specific to implementation. And and really don't need to be. The the interesting, really named outdoor activities during electrical storms policy. And the unlicensed motor vehicle, so we have, you know, we've, we've confirmed, we we've, we've covered what we need to in other policies, these these are no longer applied, so. I think that's it for those, happy to answer any questions. And anybody else from the policy subcommittee, please, China. If you wish.
I was gonna say, the only question I have, I guess, is a. Clarifying question, I heard you say no first read is necessary for us to take a vote to archive, that's correct.
So as far as I can tell, from our policies on policies, we don't, in order to do the act of archiving a policy. We don't have to do a first read and then a second read and a. And then a vote, so it's, so we can vote tonight if we want on some or or all of these, or we, if people want, we can, you know, wait and do it next meeting. So it's up to us.
Does anybody have any strong feelings against archiving them tonight? Or or voting to or against, yeah. All right, you got a motion, might want to. Allison?
I move that we archive policy, the policies as presented, GBG, AA, JLCCA, CDB, CDC. EBCF and ECAF.
Second.
Moved by Allison, seconded by Jennifer. There's no further discussion, we'll take a roll call vote. All right, Jean?
Jean, aye.
Allison?
Allison, aye.
Erv?
Erv, aye.
Jennifer?
Jennifer, aye.
Peter?
Peter, aye?
Margaret?
Margaret, aye.
My whole screen just went.
Sorry, I should have done that earlier, I I know you were trying to look around a screen with only seeing a couple of people, so I should have gotten that off earlier, my bad, Ben.
Sarah Bess?
Sarah Bess, aye.
There's Jean already. I had my tic-tac-toe going.
Yes, you did. I'll eye it twice if you want.
Take two eyes. Erv?
Erv, aye.
Me? Oh, no, who did I leave out, just raise your hand real quick.
I'm sitting in the magic square. Sullivan, aye.
So. And me, Ben, aye, the motion passes unanimously.
Excellent, thank you, so we will continue the archive train at at the upcoming meetings, so. Thanks very much. Um, so the the next item is also a policy item, and Jennifer, who's also a member of the policy subcommittee, took the lead on this one, so I can turn it over to her.
Sure, so we wanted to suggest making. Changes to all of the policies in in the following way, whenever there is a male pronoun or binary pronouns, or whatever it says. The superintendent, he shall, or a student, he slash she shall, or 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 whatever. Wherever it's a male pronoun or binary pronouns, to just replace them with they, them, there throughout the entire document. Throughout, throughout all of the policies. And there is a policy on policy on minor wording changes to policies, which allows us to do that. Without having to sort of go through each one, and I believe. Process-wise, I believe Debbie had said that someone in the front office would be able to do this, just, you know, uh, uh, one by one. As she has free time, as she has time available to do so under Debbie's guidance. Did I say, did I do it? Yeah.
I suppose my question is similar to the last one, we need to do anything to move on this, just go ahead and take this up and. Motion going.
I think it'd be nice to vote on it, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a bit of a values action on our, on our part. You know, we're choosing that it's, it's they, there, and. I think it's, it's nice to have a vote to kind of formalize it. Just my opinion.
Entertaining motion? Jennifer, go ahead.
I move that we replace all masculine or binary pronouns in all policies with they, them, there.
Second.
Oh, there we go. Moved by Jennifer, seconded by Sarah Bess. Unless there's any further discussion, take up a roll call vote, screen this way, all right. Erv?
Erv, aye.
Peter?
Peter, aye.
Jennifer?
Jennifer, aye.
Allison?
Allison, aye. Allison, I.
Uh, Jean?
Jean, I.
Steven?
Steven, I.
Sarah Bess?
Sarah Bess, I.
And Margaret?
Margaret, I.
Ben, I. Motion passes unanimously. I would just also like to say for the record that phonetically, I like the fact that we have policies on policy. That's so awesome. So let's move on to, uh, future agenda planning. Uh, do you have the document to bring up, Mike?
Yeah, I think I'll read it off. Um, I think we'll probably, uh, there may be an interest in having an executive session, um, at least one of our bargaining units that were not, just was not discussed tonight, if not others. Um, I've got, um, principals report next steps that got pushed a couple of meetings ago, uh, S R spending update. Um, so Shannon will be here for that. Uh, quite some time ago, there was a discussion, uh, and a suggestion from a committee member about, uh, public comment policies and reviewing them. There was an article shared with the committee around that. So we had that tentatively slotted in for next week. So I have got, uh, the, um, executive session, principals report, S R spending update, and then a conversation about public comment policy and procedures and potential changes. I imagine there's some, the reason to talk about it is whether, uh, there's, um, the current system's working well or whether there's changes that the committee would like to entertain. Those are the topics I had, but certainly, um,
Margaret?
Um, I, I, I not quite, I decided this is the place to ask. Are we going to have some kind of ongoing updates about fundraising for the track and field project, organization, who's doing what, what, you know, is, are we going to get any information about that going forward?
Um, if, if I could jump in, um, I think, I think there is some work doing, we could certainly do an update, but until town meetings and the town of Amber's actually passed the bond, it's a, you know, it's, it might be more helpful to, to do that in a month or five weeks than, than next week, but I have it roughly slated for the kind of May, uh, once we get, go ahead.
Yeah, that's fine. I was just asking, is that something, it doesn't have to be next week, but I think it would be valuable at some point if we're going to move forward to have some kind of update about what's going on. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Else, anybody else that they want to add on? Uh, Sarah Bess, go ahead.
This is the 12th?
Yes.
The 12th is the right, okay. Thank you.
And if there's anything recently you'd like to add? You can always email it to me or if, if something comes up. So moving on, Erv, do you have any, do you have any warrants to report?
Uh, yes, I do. So, uh, I have roads authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $640,926.71 since, uh, war, on a four warrant dated 3/24/2022. Second one is I have, I have roads authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $460,075.71 since they, um, for a warrant dated, uh, 3/17/2022. Uh, the other one I wasn't sure of is, is the, uh, one for scholarship. Uh, is that something that I should be doing also? All right. So I have roads authorized by my signature scholarship warrant and amount of $6,000 for a scholarship dated 3/29/22.
Thank you, Erv. Uh, Jennifer?
Should the warrants be or will they be posted on board docs?
So, uh, without Doug here, I'm having a hard time answering. So maybe if you could, uh, bring that question up or we can get back to you, uh, because he, he's gonna have, I know this came up in the past with, um, and we got legal advice on it. I just can't recall what it is, but maybe that's why Allison is raising her hand.
I, I don't remember the legal advice, but it was, um, re, this, something that I was reading recently was describing it, that it, it, it doesn't have to be, um, published, but it has to be available for, um, for any, any committee member to review. So I don't know that that answered your question.
So, so my assumption was that those warrants were coming to everyone and that I was then, no, but so no one else sees those except me. Interesting. Um, it's, so the other thing is that I believe that there's one warrant that I missed, but I can't find it. So I'm not sure, but I will, I'm going to go back, uh, through them all again, but I think there is one that I missed.
We could definitely revisit that next, next Tuesday. I don't see any gifts. Are there any gifts hiding on here that I don't take? No gifts. So speaking of gifts, I'll go ahead and accept the motion.
I move the adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Jennifer, seconded by Margaret. Take a roll call vote. Make this easier on me. Me, Ben, I. Sarah Bess?
Sarah Bess, I.
Allison?
I.
Jean?
Jean, I.
Margaret?
Margaret, I.
Jennifer?
Jennifer, I.
Steven?
Steven, I.
Peter?
Peter, I?
And Erv?
Erv, I.
It's unanimous. We are adjourned. See you all next Tuesday or maybe before too.
Bye.
See you.